All right, let's call it an order meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 19th.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
And the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands under God, in heaven.
All right, our invocations today will be led by Pastor Drew Redding to the Grace Community Fellowship in Ottawa.
Good morning, thanks for inviting me to be with you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just, we thank you for the way that you move and work in our lives. We thank you for just the constant reminders that you are a God who loves us. We pray that you would be present here this morning or that we would recognize and feel your presence. We pray for our commissioners, that you'd be granting them wisdom, that you would be directing them, that they would be willing to follow after you this morning. We pray that you would be with their families, that you'd be watching over them, that you'd be keeping them safe. We pray, Heavenly Father, for, really for Franklin County, that your presence would be known and felt here. We thank you for the way that you have continued to bless us. We pray these things in your son's holy name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, no correspondence, any public comment?
No.
No? Consent agenda today would include tax change orders in about $1,379.72, meeting minutes from the 12th of this month, study session was on the 17th, claim vouchers are $1,069,319.14, and to solicit bids for Culvers. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve consent agenda?
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, first item of business would be to consider entering into agreement with KDOT for the replacement of a bridge on Osborne Terrace.
Commissioners, this is a, just another formality, something that KDOT requires for all of their projects where we enter into agreements with them. The language is standard. This particular agreement is for the Osborne Terrace Bridge Replacement Project that is currently in the design phase. And we just would like to move forward with the agreement.
Any questions for David? We've talked about this project quite a bit. Would anyone like to make a motion to execute the agreement between Franklin County and KDOT that's in front of us?
That motion? Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, second item of business, consider an interlocal agreement.
So, this particular item is the Regional Solid Waste Authority, which is a group that Commissioner Stottermeyer, myself, are a part of. We are updating the interlocal agreement with all of the counties. The only updates are really changing some meeting times. It's very basic. I've outlined on the cover sheet the four modifications. The rest of the agreement is just how it was before. The meeting dates are a little more conducive to us actually conducting the business that we need to, a little more appropriate dates. And so, we're just looking for your approval to amend the agreement.
Anything you want to add, Don, you serve on that one?
Yes, we did meet the board and made the decision that we need to change some of these dates, not change the agreement. It's just changing the annual meeting to fit better with our budget and our quest for budget. And the timeline just worked out better, so. That's basically the only changes.
All right. Any questions before we look to vote?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, staff reports, Derek?
You don't have a lot today, Cole. Just been, spent a lot of time the last week working with my HR director on continuing to tweak budget numbers. I've said this several times, but that's, you know, that's a pretty challenging part of the budget because it's hard to, you can never really know what turnover is going to be or as new employees come on, we don't know what benefits package they're going to select. And those, of course, are all, you know, cost varying amounts of money, so. But just working with her to try and tighten that up and then, this is something that I've discussed with the five of you, but we are continuing to work towards employee appreciation and having a luncheon here. Right now, we are targeting end of June is what we're hoping to do. And so, we will continue to put that together and have discussions with all of you as appropriate. But we feel like in consultations with Dr. Ransom, particularly in light of the recent CDC guidance, that we feel comfortable having an event and kind of a celebration for, you know, it's been a tough year, year and a half here. So, that's really all I have at this time. Thanks, Cole.
A lot of work goes into those budgets that we never see, especially not just your office, but down at the courthouse, the clerk, the appraiser and all those, so appreciate it. Casey?
All right. Nick? We usually have you after Casey, so. Tradition.
I don't have a lot, just to give you a quick report. We have eight active COVID cases in the county. We've only seen four since last Wednesday. We are seeing about 20 people a week signing up or calling in to get the vaccine. We're still giving Moderna one day, Johnson &amp; Johnson the other. Still seeing very few people wanting the Pfizer for the 12 and up. So, we are sending them over to Health Partnership Clinic or Walgreens. So, those places are still able to do it. So, until we see an increase in that need, we're going to continue to go with what we have and try to thin that out a little bit before we add something else. Other than that, I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
Thanks for the update.
I have a quick question. So, I know, I know a nurse in Topeka who was vaccinated early on and her hospital told her if you went someplace like Colorado, even if you're fully vaccinated, when you come home, you have to quarantine. Are we, does that make sense at all?
I will tell you, hospitals and other places have a lot of their own internal policies on what they're doing and it's all driven by the medical direction or the chief medical staff of those hospitals or if in county cases, the health directors and that. So, I, I can't really answer why they're doing it. I've seen the literature that says that.
I don't know if it's because there's variants out there or, but, okay. I mean, I just hope we don't get to that point.
I do too.
All right, Casey?
I just want to add on something quick about COVID. And to your point, IAN, KDHU's website about the travel thing to Colorado does say if you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine. So, that was probably a special rule for their hospital, like you said. We have gotten several questions about the, just the minimal cases that we have and if they have been vaccinated or not. So, I had Nick and Aaron look into that and we cannot find that any of them had been vaccinated, so.
Oh, that's good.
Good to know. All right, Sheriff?
Good morning. I want to let the board know that this Friday night will be the last shift for Corporal Mike Voits. He'll be retiring from the sheriff's office after 22 years of service. And we will have a actual retirement, I guess, ceremony on February, oh, sorry. That'd be way off. But June 4th is when, is when we will be having his actual ceremony. Mike is a dog handler and the dog that he has now, he is the second handler to have that dog. We thought that we were, that that dog was going to stay on, but in, with consultation with our train, with the trainers and certifiers on that, based on the dog's age and the fact that Mike's already the second handler, their recommendation was to go ahead and have that canine retire at the same time. And so, we took that to the foundation board and, who funds our program, and they voted unanimously to go ahead and retire that dog. So, Gonzo will also be retiring the same day. And then, we've already have an, have an order in for our replacement canine and the, the foundation has been really good to work with, with us on that process. So, we do have that going on. Also, there was some delay with getting some of the things on Purple Wave, but currently, we do have our vehicles that were the ones that were going away from 2020 are actually on the Purple Wave auction right now. So, you guys will, will see those there. And the last thing I have is I just wanted to give kudos to Casey. She's, I've been working with her on getting some of the apparel orders and some of those things set up for our staff. And she has done a lot of that, I think, outside of her regular hours. And it was not my expectation, but she was just that dedicated. So, I just wanted to say thanks to her and let you guys know the work that she's doing, so. Other than that, if you guys have any questions for me?
We have two dogs.
We have three dogs.
Three?
So, when this, when this dog retires after Friday shift, we will be down to two. When Quanto, when we had his retirement ceremony last week, he had, we had already had that replacement dog out on the street.
I've seen, he was out at the, our site out here on the 300 acres. I've seen two sheriff's cars out there and have two dogs out there working them out there.
Yes.
Not supposed to get them used to working together. I suppose maybe they do the one and then the other one.
Yes, they do that. And there is a group of canine handlers for the metro area that get together once a week and do training together, several different agencies. And our agency is a part of that. And recently, that group, instead of us having to drive up to Olathe, that group all came down here and they, they trained down in our county. We do that every couple of months or so.
I was hoping they would just train and not look for somebody.
Depending on the day. Any other questions for me?
Your people getting around all the water, okay?
We've had a few delays. Monday, we had, we had some delays that took, so we, what we did was we kind of divided things up and we had additional people responding to calls. If they were, if we have somebody that's stuck down in the south end of the county, we have people that will stay up north to make sure that they could get through. But I think a lot of that water has gone down already. So, we managed, managed through it. It's just what you expect when you get a lot of heavy rain all at once, so.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Alan?
Good morning. Just to give you an update on the flooding. We had a moderate flood and as the sheriff said, it was more of an inconvenience than anything else. We started having flooding on Sunday with some of our secondary roads going underwater. And then, the river started flooding on Monday. As most of you are aware of, the floodgates were closed here in Ottawa on Monday due to the debris. And then, also, the city has a plan. And when the river reaches a certain level, they'll close the floodgates to protect the citizens in case there is some problems with the bridge. I saw them down there this morning and they are removing debris still as the water is receding to clear everything. And then, they generally have a engineer come in and inspect the bridge before they open the floodgates back up. I'll let David talk about the damage to the roads. We had the usual flooding from the west side of the county to the east side of the county, going over Colorado Road, Idaho Road, Vermont Road. Those are main blacktops that had water over them. We've got anywhere from six to eight inches of rain across different areas in the county. With that being said, one thing that I do want to point out, Casey helped us get the message out to everybody. And then, on the county website, there's an interactive map that this, the first time this year that we've used it. It's an ArcGIS map that Public Works, the dispatch center and my office can keep the road closed up to date as accurate as possible. So, as the roads were being closed, they were able to instantly, when they found them, put a dot on the map saying that the road's closed due to flooding. So, if you have anybody, citizens, asking for the current road closures in the county, I would suggest that they go to our county website to look at that map. Yesterday, as the roads opened, Public Works removed those dots off after inspecting to see if there was any damage and the road was open for traffic, so. We are also working with David and the Public Works guys to see if we have enough damage to qualify. The state has not done a state declaration. We need approximately $100,000 damage for our county to qualify for damages. If that does occur, I'll be coming back to the chair of the board to do a declaration for the FEMA assistance.
What do you think, Alan? Do you think that we'll meet that threshold or?
In talking with David yesterday, if we don't have any structures, it's probably, we may or may not make it.
I thought the county or the state did, because they were talking about Celine County and all. I thought they had a statewide declaration.
Well, they haven't put anything out for damages from the counties or anything yet, so. They did have in North Central, a lot of major flash flooding and it got into a small town up there, so.
Questions for Alan? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Paul B., anything from CDC? All right. David?
So, just to piggyback on what Alan was explaining, we have been updating the, that interactive map as we get new information. I'm trying to get that updated on a regular basis. Some of the roads are still marked as closed. That is primarily due to, well, we still have some areas where there is water on the road or next to the road and there's still debris in some locations. Most of our major thoroughfares are all open. We are still assessing the damage. Colorado Road, for instance, you know, on Monday, we just talked about what to do with the erosion on the side. Well, guess what? You can plainly see it today for that, nearly that whole strip down through there. So, we are out looking at bridges and box culverts and crossroad tubes and that sort of thing for damage right now. Over the last couple of days, we have repaired already 17 different locations, at least to a temporary status to be able to get the vehicular traffic through. We're able to do that, that number of locations, at least partially due to having an extra skid loader now. So, that, that new piece of equipment that we just bought is already paying dividends by us being able to get around a little quicker to these locations. And like I said, we will be, we are evaluating structures. I'm not sure that we will meet the $100,000 threshold through the storms that we had this past weekend and into Monday. However, if we get substantially more rain in the coming days, that could tip the scales and, and we may pass that threshold. But until we have a little bit more time to get into these locations and evaluate them, we really don't know for sure. Most of our, like I said, most of our roads are open and passable. We still have a few locations, our low water crossings. There's still water rolling over those and I wouldn't advise folks driving through the low water crossing. And then, we also have two locations, an area south of Pomona and just east of Quinamo, kind of down, it's a very low area. That is not passable at this time. And then, also, the, the area that is known as Peoria Bottoms between Imes and Peoria. That's another floodplain area and there's a fair amount of damage there. Plus, we have a tremendous amount of cornstalks that have washed. It always does whenever we have floods. And so, we've got, I would advise folks to avoid that area for the next, probably the next few weeks while it dries out and we're able to get in there and remove those cornstalks. So, we have been notified, we were notified by, on, by KDOT on Monday to prepare as if this is going to be a declaration. And so, we are in the Public Works Department being, taking a proactive approach and documenting all of the work that we're doing, creating work orders, tracking the work and materials that we're using to fix these, these locations. And those 17 locations does not include all the locations that have been addressed by motor graders. And we've had, we've delivered rock all over the county to specific washouts. The 17 locations that I'm referring to were just locations that guys and skid loaders and backhoes and trackhoes have, have taken care of. So, that number would be far greater included all the other locations. So, we are, we're in repair mode again.
Alan, I did find my information, she declared a state of emergency. Yeah, so I was, I was mispoke there, so.
Not all of our roads qualify for, if they're, certain roads don't qualify for damage, right?
Well, what we have here, we've got two different, we have FEMA fund, which is where we would be reimbursed for all of our secondary roads. And then, we have KDOT through the Federal Highway Administration, which is another pot of funding opportunity that takes care of all of our FAS, all of our blacktops, those types of roads and infrastructure. And so, we do, the KDOT side is a little bit more limited on what they will reimburse for, but we still, we still have those opportunities.
So, Rock Creek Road wouldn't qualify under the state?
It would under KDOT.
Yeah, I know you guys are out there, but it tore up pretty good down there where the water went across there.
Yeah, there's, there is some asphalt that has popped. There's at least one driveway that has, has been destroyed pretty much, but that, those things.
Nothing surprising.
They, they occur every time it floods down there.
That's just a bad place right there.
All the department has continued to work with Rodney, our auditor, and he's onsite with his assistant, Vicky. And so, they continue to work through our audit. I think they're getting pretty close to being finished. So, we're just wrapping up some, some final things and tying up some loose ends. We are doing that single audit this year on the funds that we received from the federal government and also the CDBG grant funds that we received. So, those will all be included in our extra audit this year that we're doing. So, he's onsite. The only other thing is today is the election day for USD 289 school district. So, everyone's voting out in Wellsville. So, that's going on today.
Be interesting. Commissioners comments, Roy?
Yesterday morning, I went to the area agency on aging. We went through the audit and everything was okay with the audit. One thing they're having a little trouble with, all their hot meals they deliver, they have to be delivered to the individuals within four hours. And a lot of them go out to the nutrition sites and then the volunteers take them from there to the homes. And so, they're working out a more efficient way to maybe send out frozen packages that will last a week at a time to some of these locations. And the Radedge Patch out there in North Industrial Park is, their van garage is pretty much done. They just have to do landscaping and some outside stuff there. So, it's about ready to be completed. And then, last night, I had an ECAN meeting, which was in this room. It was our first in-person meeting we had for about a year, seems like. And everybody got to reacquaint themselves with each other with ECAN. And they went over a lot of, a lot of their, what's going on in their departments. They're not going to do Head Start this summer. It's going to be off. Down in Garnett, they have a building down there they use for Head Start and it needs to be evaluated by environmental group about if there's any, I guess, hazard materials or something like that in that building. So, I got that going out and down, and down in Garnett. Went through basically all the businesses and everything's going good. They got, they got a ton of different groups that fund their programs and went through every one of those. It's pretty amazing how they can keep track of 10 or 12 or 15 government agencies that support community action groups like, like ECAN. And, and when you're covering 17 counties like ECAN does, it's a, a lot of people to coordinate with, so it's a pretty big process. And I appreciate using this room here for their meeting last night, so worked out good.
Diane?
Last Thursday, I got to attend, went out to the visitor center and met those visitors. And those, those people are really awesome people and they have a heart for the, actually, a heart for volunteering. So, it was nice to meet them and just kind of get an idea of what their vision is. I did listen to the City of Ottawa study session. I'm glad we don't have to do the things that they do like condemning properties and things like that. Somebody asked why the City of Ottawa was choosing to fix the bridge over the river at the same time that there was a flood, which neither one of them is their decision. So, it was like, same, same thing that they had a power outage in the middle of the flea junk and trunk, whatever. Yeah, so, again, that was a squirrel. So, it was nothing to do with what was going on. Today is a battle for blood. I'm not sure, but, so at the auditorium, you can give blood from 11:00 to 6:00. Then, you can give blood at the building at the fairgrounds. One is the Community Blood Center and the other one is American Red Cross. So, it does something that you can do. All the way through the pandemic, they've always had, they've had a shortage of blood. So, if you can give, give. And today is my and my husband's 42nd, or 42nd anniversary. So, happy anniversary to my husband, Scott.
All right. Congratulations. Rod?
I have nothing to add, Cole.
Don?
Yeah, I hope you guys apologize to the city for me. I'm not going to be going to dinner. I'd signed up for it. That is today, isn't it? Okay, girls, they changed the date so the girls' regionals, I'm going to my granddaughter's. Well, me go, so I forgot about the two until you mentioned it there. So, I thought I'd bring, apologize to them because they are making an effort for numbers and have food ready. So, apologize for them, I didn't make it. I did get a call from a person the other day on the Public Works. I sent them to talk to David. They called me back later and told me they were very happy with their conversation. I think, you know, anytime, usually you don't get a call back from somebody when they're satisfied with something. You only get a call back when they're not satisfied with something. So, I was very pleased to get a call back and said he was very happy with his results of sending me to David. And so, you know, kudos to him. One other thing, I haven't been to any meetings. I don't know, of course, Roy's the only one and he wasn't even there when they started. I'm real curious, we're taking pictures, I know, today. And I know we have pictures that go back to 2001. Do you know where those are at?
No, I would have to talk to Brandon. I suspect he would know. They could be in that back room behind there. I'm not sure, Don.
I mean, I'm just one person, but I would like to see another room because it only goes back to 2001, when they started. And that was the first original elected five commissioner. And four of those gentlemen aren't even with us anymore. And I just kind of an honor to them, I think, that, you know, that it's, if we can possibly do that, to, to go back there, you know, to some of those people, you know.
I know the city commission has a lot of them on the wall.
Yeah, that was the first, they, they tried to get pictures of the first five commissioners because two of them were appointed. Well, a couple of them were sick and it just never happened. And so, actually, it started with the first elected five commissioners in 2001, I think. So, I just think it'd be nice if they were up there. And you may want to wait because you're planning on redoing that wall there. So, why put anything up there that you're going to take back? And you may want to wait, because you're planning on redoing that wall there, so why put anything up there that you're going to take back down again, so. That, that's all I have.
Anything I need to add? So, that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Any opposed?